All right, guys. It is seven o'clock. I now call the mayor, or May 6, 2025, regular meeting of the city council to order. Our invocation is going to be given today by Brian Nevins of the Calvary Chapel of Northern Kentucky. Welcome.
Thank you. If you would, please pray with me. Our Lord and God, we come to you with all prayer and supplication with thanksgiving, and the promise that you give peace that passes understanding with the mind of Christ. Thank you for your great provision, for a great place to live, for this privilege of gathering and self-government, recognizing the responsibilities and freedoms it carries. We wish to honor before you, Lord, the memory of those who sacrificed their lives for the sake of our lives, our freedom, and our safety. We thank you for giving us such men and women of character and bravery. We pray that you look upon those who now suffer for their time in service and that you would pour out your mercy and your grace. We ask that our own city officials be protective of those precious and very expensive rights that have been guarded by brave men and women, that they take their responsibilities to the residents of our friendship city with the gravity and wisdom they need and deserve without personal agendas or pursuits, that they may be men and women of virtue, integrity, and with a heart of humble service. We pray for wisdom for Mayor Fetty, for our city administrator, Mr. Glenn, and for this assembled council, and we thank you for their service. In your grace, grant them wisdom and insight for the needs of our citizens and a single mission in their pursuits to meet them. We ask that you hold them to a high standard of integrity, especially since you will judge them for every action. We pray for Chiefs Raider and Godsey and all their first responders, and thank you for them also, and keep them safe as they work to keep us safe. We ask for your blessing upon them and their families, Father. Grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their task, and we pray for the agenda set before them today. Please make clear to them what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city. Let us not in arrogance think that we will do this or that in the coming year, but only as you will it. And is in the name and the most blessed name of Jesus that we ask these things. Amen.
Thank you. All right, please rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands on one nation under our own, invincible for liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mrs. Hoffman, if you can please take role.
Mr. Cahill?
Present.
Mr. Farmer?
Present.
Ms. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Farmers?
Here.
Ms. Nicely?
Present.
All right, thank you. All right, you've received a copy of the minutes for the April 1st, 2025, regular council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Ms. Nicely, Mr. Farmer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried. You have also received a copy of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Ms. Reckers, Mr. Cahill, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried. All right, our first special presentation this evening is Saki Bomb. I'm going to pass it over to Mark Collier to tee it up.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, everybody. Today I get to introduce Mr. Park from Saki Bomb. That is located at 3072 Dixie Highway. Mr. Park and I have gotten acquainted since I started here at Erlanger. I continue to be amazed at the gems that we have here in Erlanger, Saki Bomb being one of them. Mr. Park just celebrated his 10 years here in Erlanger, and so we have done the business spotlight for his business today. And before we get into that, just want to give a quick shout out to the Erlanger sushi roll. Great, great menu item, I love it. So, Mr. Glenn, if you would tee up the video for Mr. Park. Thank you, Mr. Park.
Growing up in a Korean village or the city, now passing by the Growing up in a Korean village or the city, now passing by the little store and then, you know, work at the different shops, show the neighborhood. We all say hi. Over here, we have a lot of regulars and then community. I mean, we all, not all, but we know a lot of customers by name. And then we see the kids growing. So it's more like tight community and watch each other and greet each other. And that feels more like Asian, not different. As soon as we opened the restaurant, I was invited to the city council within a month after we opened. And then there, the comment that in my speech was, "I'll be a good neighbor." So we came and opened the restaurant 2015 and then now 25, so 10 years. And it's been a long journey, but I didn't realize it's already 10 years. I'm really grateful to everyone who loved us and liked our food and then at the same time became friends or more than friends. So I'm really thankful and grateful and appreciate all to our regular customers. That's all I want to say.
Three words I heard routinely, Mr. Park, in that video were gratitude, neighbors, and community. And you definitely exude all of those things, and we're very appreciative of you being here in the city of Erlanger. So thank you so much. Did you want to say anything, Mr. Park? Okay. Thank you for being here.
All right, our next special presentation is our post-secondary education scholarship. And I am going to come down to the podium. All right, so normally we have our past winner give the presentation for our new winner. However, Lillian wasn't going to be able to be here today, so she wrote us a letter. So I'm going to read that to you guys. Hi, everyone. If you weren't here last year, my name is Lillian Overbay, and I attended Notre Dame Academy for high school. I'm sorry I couldn't be in attendance tonight due to a very hectic exam week. I just wanted to take a moment to reflect on what an amazing first year I've had at the University of Kentucky. Honestly, coming into college, I wasn't totally sure what to expect, but this year ended up being better than I could have imagined. I'm majoring in speech pathology, and I've already learned so much about the field. It's been exciting to dive into classes that align with what I am passionate about. And being a part of NSSLHA, the National Student Speech Language Hearing Association, has given me a great glimpse into the professional side of things. It's been awesome meeting others who are on the same path and equally passionate about helping people find their voice literally and figuratively. Second semester was also a big turning point for me. I joined Kappa Delta, and it's been such a fun, supportive community. I've made some of my closest friends through it, and it's made campus feel even more like a home. I've also applied to be on a few committees for next year, and I'm super excited to hopefully get more involved and give back to the community that's given so much to me already. The scholarship helped me to ease some financial stress, and I was so grateful to be the recipient for the 2024-2025 school year. So, very good to hear from Lillian. And it's always nice to hear from our previous scholarship winners and understand how hopefully they'll come back to the community and give back. All right, so today's special presentation, if you want to come on up here. All right, so I would like to introduce the recipient of the city's 2025 scholarship, Louis Slasher. Louis, congratulations. I'm going to have a little bit of a speech for you, okay? All right, so Louis is a 2025 upcoming graduate of Beachwood High School, who has already achieved many accomplishments. While at Beachwood, he participated in forensics, tennis, soccer, Kentucky Student Voice Team, National Honor Society, National English Honors, and Mo Alpha Theta Societies. Louis has served over 640 hours in community service. He would like to pursue a degree in computer engineering with a minor in business, and his goal is to work in the cybersecurity field. In the fall, Louis is going to be attending Harvard. That's quite the accomplishment. Very proud of you. All right, so we have a proclamation for you. So Louis Miles Slasher, for his many community achievements, for the difference he has made in the lives of others, and for being an inspiration to us all, and recognizes him on being the 2025 recipient of the City of Erlanger Post-Secondary Education Scholarship. Now, therefore, I, Jessica Fetty, Mayor of the City of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby present the certificate on May 6, 2025. All right, would you like to say anything?
I just want to say thank you to you all. I'm really grateful and appreciative for this award.
I'm going to bounce to the municipal road aid funding. Kevin, I'll come back to the city proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody should have received a little document in front of you about the municipal aid road fund. Each year, we're awarded money from the state. This year, we're awarded $458,459. You can see a list of streets that this money will go to for repairs and improvements. Narrows Road, Concord Drive, Deer Chase, Thorntree, Sky Drive, and Locust Street. Is there any questions on the end of that? All right, I'll talk about this a little bit more when we get to Capitol, because it does obtain to the Narrows Road Bridge. So, thank you.
And just to comply with the statute, we just have to ask if there's any public comment.
Has anybody signed in by any chance? All right, so I'm going to go back to number three, special presentation, the proclamation for city government. All right. This is something that we do every year to recognize all of our city employees and the wonderful contributions that they give to all of our residents and business owners within the city. So to all to whom these presents shall come, the month of May honors several individuals and departments throughout the city of Erlanger. During the month, the city will be paying tribute to our administration clerks, police officers, EMS, and public works employees. Let us recognize our city clerk and the administration team. The city clerk office serves as the link between the citizens of Erlanger, the local governing bodies, and the agency of government at all other levels. The city clerk's office is the information center of the city. Let us recognize the officers of the Erlanger Police Department. They serve Erlanger by safeguarding life and liberty, by protecting the citizens against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent. The police officers are the protectors of the city. In recognizing the safeguarding of lives, the Erlanger Fire and EMS department members of emergency medical services engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. The EMS are the caretakers of the city. The care of the city is also vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of the public works employees. The health, safety, and comfort of Erlanger greatly depends on the services they provide. The public works employees are the keepers of the city. Now, therefore, I, Jessica Fetty, Mayor of the City of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4 through the 10th, 2025, to be City Clerk Week; the week of May 11th through the 17th, 2025, National Police Week; the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025, to be Public Works Week; and the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025, Emergency Medical Services Week in Erlanger. And do commend this observance to all of our citizens, given under my hand and the seal of the City of Erlanger on this day, May 6, 2025. All right, that concludes our special presentations this evening, and I don't believe we have any comments from the public. So I am going to move on to our mayor's report. And this evening, we have the Judge Executive in house. So Judge Nauchman, if you'd like to come to the podium, I think you're going to give us an update on what's going on in the county. So thanks so much for being here with us this evening. If you can hit that little green button. Yeah, there you go.
There we go. Fast learner. Well, good evening, everybody. And wow, it's nice to come out here again and also on a nice sunny evening. I know, so I'm going to be brief, so you all can get home and sit on your porch and maybe get some laundry done or something. But really, just to want to take a time, a few moments, just to share with you some of the things that are going on in Kenton County that directly or closely relate to what's going on in Erlanger. And really, as you know, a lot of the stuff day to day is happening, and it's not very exciting sometimes, and there's a great, you know, your team out here that's doing great work every day. But I want to just highlight a few things that are really, we're very excited about in Kenton County that do impact the city. And as always, I want to just tell you that, please feel free, always reach out, feel free to call, email. If you see something that you'd like us to do differently, call, email. I might not always agree with you, but I'm happy to get the input and maybe learn something and maybe change my mind. But a lot of things are happening, and it's, you know, it's been now over 10 years that I've been in this role. And it's amazing when you look back at the projects that we've accomplished. Things take time. You don't do them all automatically overnight. And I'm a very impatient person, so when I look back on all this stuff, you realize we've got a decade or so of effort, but it's showing a lot of impact. You know, and as you all know, there's some of the efforts our community is focused on, you know, good schools, public safety, roads, economic development, and managing our finances. Schools are not something that the county is directly related to, but the other stuff, we are. We have some connection to roads and economic development, and we always want to make sure that we're keeping aware and really always raising the bar. In that area, and what I know is very, very close to your all's hearts and the previous councils, previous mayors, is our efforts with dispatch. councils, previous mayors, is our efforts with dispatch. Ashley Hawks, who has been, is running our dispatch operation now, and as you know, Chief Rader is on our dispatch board and is able to represent your city and really the entire community on the dispatch board. We are thankfully very solid with in technology, budget, and operations. We continue, I think, to have the best dispatch operation of the region, and both in technology and in support of your first responders, and which is what we're supposed to be doing to improve and always keep the level of public safety to a high level. Just a note that dispatch calls, you know, Erlanger, both in terms of arresting agencies and dispatch calls, is about third in the county, and that's been consistent for years. And, and that really speaks to the, the activity that Erlanger has. I don't need to tell you that your officers and your fire department are out there and be, dealing with the city, or dealing with the expressway and, and public, and the transportation throughout. It's a burden you have, but it's also a responsibility that I will tell you hold very well, and we want to try and support that in every given, in every day with our backup of dispatch. I think I just, I was asking Ashley today in a note that I don't know if you're, you might not be aware of this, but when we did dispatch and we did the dispatch fee just many years ago, we do support the cities with the MDT, so the computers are in the police department, in the cruisers, that's part of the countywide budget. We do actually handle the, the internet for every two, essentially every two laptops. You have, you, you basically split that with us, but that's built into the model. So that is not something you have to put onto your budget, that's something that's built into the whole countywide effort, which is, reduces costs, keeps the technology up to a high level, and I'm very proud of that effort that dispatch and Ashley does with, with the board, et cetera. Also, as I alluded to, the dispatch, our detention center, someone you all know very well, Mark Fields is our jailer. He's doing an extraordinary job and continues to really raise the bar and everything from financial management to making sure he's there to support your officers and, and is the, you know, we need to make sure that anybody's arrested, is pulled off the street if they, well, breaking laws, as well as raising an issue with public safety. Just as a quick note, what we're finding in behind the scenes data is that our population has been managed very well to make sure those who are locked up should be, but the other side of the population is if they need to be out working and getting a job, do we get them into treatment, getting us a help that they need? And really, I will tell you, unlike I've ever seen, we have, I think, the best connectivity between the judges, the arresting agencies, and the jailer to make sure we're managing that population well. Those who are arrested and those who end up getting locked up for a longer period of time are typically today, you know, the, the idea a few years ago, the, the addiction issue is different, the medical condition of inmates is far different and far more expensive, which goes on to the budget of the county once they're arrested. And, but Mark is managing that very well, and I will tell you that I think that having him be in the, you know, the shoes of a police chief and, and knows the city work, he's there to support the efforts, and I think is continuing to do that very well within the four walls of the detention center. Now looking back, that, that building's now 15 years old, to think about those who were around the days when we were trying to get that thing built, it's kind of crazy how time, how time flies. But that continues to be something we're very proud of. Also, the police department, as you, I think also know, you have one of the best departments in the state, if not definitely in the region. We are there to support you, so in some of the areas the city of Erlanger doesn't have certain services and capability, Spike Jones is there to continue to help and add service capability, whether it be, you know, accident evaluation, if there's a better term for it, geez, not here that I'm seeing. Thank you. And words. And so those are the ideas, we're always there, public works, our roads department, making sure that our police department, there, we're there to fill in where needed, and that continues to be the case. You all are working diligently with, obviously, Representative Don to make sure that, and all of our representatives, House and Senate in Frankfurt, to make sure that we're getting infrastructure dollars right here in front. You've been working on that for some time, and it's great to see those really millions of dollars invested. We're always happy to, that's not our responsibility, but we're, we're advocates, so we can always help to, to make sure that we're making those investments in the community across the board, whether they're city, county, or state roads. And one other one that I think you're aware of, but the Road Reporter, which is on our, on site, on our, online, we really encourage more and more people to use that to make sure that if they see an issue, this is the time of year where, I don't know about you, but I seem to find the biggest and deepest holes for my car to go into, and that happens this time of year. You guys fix it on your roads, we want to make sure that we are able to share that with our public works teams. It's a great resource to, to use. Jumping to more fun topics, you know, we talked about, and you all are doing a great plan with eons, the parks efforts and, and that's going on in our entire community. As you all know, in general, Kenton County in particular, we're underparked, we're not overparked. Green space is an economic development tool, it's a quality of life tool, it's all of the above, and I'm encouraging and supporting what you all continue to do to plan for the future. And, you know, as you know, Erlanger with Doe Run Lake, we were, we're planning, that's on the list, to continue to invest in that park and other, other assets that the county has. And really, we just realized that if, you know, if you take your eye off the ball on this kind of stuff and investment, it's kind of like your roof at home. Suddenly you realize, wait a minute, I didn't realize I gotta have a roof, but if you don't keep on investing and maintaining, it falls apart, not cheap ever, but we're continuing to do that with our parks, and all of our parks obviously are supported and serve all of the residents of Kenton County. But in particular, you might notice some of the Closer Winds Pioneer, and also, of course, the golf course, which we continue to invest in. Want to let, jump also to the meteor stuff of our, our efforts of economic development. You know, Mark's doing a great job, working with all the local partners, but also with BNKY. As people call up and want to come to our community, you've got some great assets that are continuing to be marketed and trying to partner to figure how do you get the best jobs in the community, both in existing structures as well as just build out on space. None of those things happen just with one entity, it takes, it does take a group of people to get some of these projects brought into our community. We do need sites, we do need methods by which we make it easier, easier and easier to do business in Kenton County and our cities, but we all know that if we don't, you know, get out there and sell it and hustle a little bit and hopefully make sure we're showing the region and the rest of the country what kind of assets we have, they're not going to come. To that end, one of those areas is, I felt very strongly about, and it's been, it's coming to fruition, which is the entrepreneurship support door really for all of North Kentucky, which is that Spark House in Covington. That facility will be open a little bit later this spring into the summer. That is a little over 50% leased out with a financial model that should allow the, that asset, which is owned by the port but managed by Blue North, our economic development entrepreneurship hub, will be an asset owned by the community. That's a $17 million asset that is, we're about a million dollars left, and we will have zero debt on that facility when it opens to support entrepreneurship, small businesses, you know, whether it be startups, fast-growing companies and everybody in between, and also housing the funders who are between, we have some of the state agencies that fund organizations, fund businesses, as well as E-GateWay, which is the largest venture capital group, group in the state of Kentucky, housed and coming to Spark House. Very exciting. And then as I think some of you know, we have a community redevelopment effort that we've developed, and the city's been in communication with us, about a $5 million fund that we've really tried to, we partnered with the state on to try and make sure that derelict properties or opportunities to redevelop parts of our community that just seem to be tough to get off that, you know, nut that we can really make an investment in. We're partnering with cities, and we've obviously been talking to your team, the mayor and Mark and, and others, and working with PDS about what kind of things can we do together to make sure these investments are made. Why? You people, we want to take, we want to make sure the property values increase, we want to make sure businesses increase, want to make sure that there's generating payroll, generating economic, really and ultimately, community wealth. It's not city or county wealth I'm worried, worried about, I want to make sure the community themselves, the residents, build that wealth. And then it's a big project, and I could go on, but this is the last one I'll touch on, and then maybe you have a comment or two or question. I think I've not gone too long, Mayor. And that is the Chase UK School of Medicine that is coming to Covington. Senator McDaniel, we've allocated, he allocated $125 million to that effort, and so JS Held, which is a very reputable, very competent organization, has been brought on to be our owner's rep, and that team is working with both UK and Chase, building out their, both their needs and how that fits into the long-term needs for facility development, which we're facilitating and partnering with the port, the North Kentucky Port Authority. And that is now at the stages of we're getting closer and closer to both a site-specific decision, and as well as then knowing that we're going to move into the process of putting certain parts of that project out for bid. So we're getting closer and closer, and really, it's been about, almost a little over a year now of effort. And, and as I said earlier, I'm very impatient, I'd like to have this already about six months more in advance than where we are, but we are gonna end up with, in Kenton County, the UK School of Medicine and Chase College of Law, and something that we can all be very, very proud of as a regional draw for not only, you know, the, building up that, that asset to say, this is something that we want to be proud of as a community, but don't we, we need more physicians, we need more nurses, we need more support in that area, of course, and this is focused in the college, or School of Medicine. But then the other side of it, and Jack would agree, the world needs more attorneys, but we do want to be a draw and really continue to raise the bar and have that asset here in the community at highest level to really be the best that, that draws the best talent. So, very exciting, and hopefully it opened up, if any, of opportunity, any questions you might have. Oh, you know, I did ask one, well, I did want to add one more thing. So our efforts, by the way, I was going to have Adam Howard, who works on behalf of our, is our city liaison with our payroll tax, occupational tax, business license tax collection, great efforts, and we really appreciate the partnership that the city has both, by the way, always brought up needs and opportunities, but also challenges to do a better job, and that's what our goal is. We want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to make it easier for the city to collect those taxes that are already there, and that those should be paying, that way you don't have to raise it anywhere else or go looking for other funds. That effort has been, there's two big projects that we've gone into play. We've actually collected about 21,000 returns in this past year, about 12 million on behalf of Erlanger, and we've two big initiatives, one is the payroll wizard, or the payroll tax wizard, and this filing wizard, what that is. It was developed primarily for realtors, started at realtors. Why? Because we wanted to make sure that those who are operating smaller businesses with smaller number of transactions could go online, very quickly, log in, note what they needed to pay, do it automatically, and done. And that has really addressed a lot of the needs of those businesses that don't have more complicated or multi-volume transactions. It's gone very well. We're continuing to work on how to get people to, to do that online. Secondarily is our payroll import system, so for the first time just recently, all payroll companies can actually download automatically. And what, why do you all care about that? Well, instead of having hundreds or thousands of returns that have to be manually logged in, they can log in, and all the companies that they take in payroll for automatically get downloaded into the system. And it's accurate, and quite frankly, I would argue this is one of our systems as we've developed, this is really in the best in the region. Why? We want to make the payroll companies, we make it easier for them to do that, so that our staff isn't added to as businesses grow. We want businesses grow, and obviously the county, so we can be more efficient and then address those items that are the most impactful for the cities. So, very exciting that, as well, smaller investment we did put, and that's something that doesn't get distributed to the cities, that gets something that's built into the overall cost of doing this, and something that's another asset that will be a long-term technology asset of the region. So, with that, now I'll stop, there's no other notes. No other zinger, questions or comments?
Shocking.
Come on. Okay, well, thanks so much. As always, reach out if you need me, and I'm always here to serve.
We're very appreciative of the relationship that we have with the county, so thank you so much for being here and giving us an update, appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good night, guys. Bye, John. All right, next on the agenda is our city administrators' report. Mr. Glenn, do you have a report tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things. Next month, we have our first City Night Out, can everybody hear me? City Night Out event, and that will be Tuesday, June the 3rd, from 5:00 to 7:00, right before the council meeting, and that's going to be at Depot Park. The following month, on July 1st, these times will all be the same, from 5:00 to 7:00, we're going to be at Silver Lake Plaza. Mark has been in contact with several business owners in that plaza, and they're excited to have us come up and have a public event in their parking lot where they can come out and meet elected officials and everything. And lastly, or, say that again? That is July 1st, so they're all going to be right prior to the council meetings. And then moving on to August the 5th, will be at Flagship Park. And that will conclude the three City Night Outs that we had planned for this year. On the, getting ready for our caucus meeting here in May, I'd like to have job descriptions on the agenda, along with wage scale revisions review. And then Sherry has asked me to make a comment on the June meeting, that will have ordinance to codify all the 2024 ordinances, so that's just a housekeeping type of thing, so there will be no pre-discussion at the caucus meeting type of thing. And then lastly, for me, we have our budget presentation tomorrow night at 5:00 PM here in council chambers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Gatlin, city attorney's report?
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
All right, report on Capitol projects.
So I, I want to talk a little bit about the Narrows Road Bridge, and kind of where we're at and how we've gotten to this point. So back in February of 2024, you know, we got reported a pothole. I mean, we deal with potholes all the time throughout the city, but this one's a little unique, we've never really dealt with a bridge. It was a little bit more, we contacted the state, state came out, did a little preliminary investigation, then they sent out an inspector basically to inspect the bridge. The bridges get inspected every two years, it was due to be inspected of July of '24 anyway. With that, though, they lowered the tonnage from 34 tons to eight, which drastically affected SD1. Moving forward, we had reached out to the state. By participating in the municipal aid road fund, we give back 3% of that money for emergency funding throughout the state. That made us eligible for $100,000 moving forward with this bridge repair. So I reached out to Craig Caudell, the state in Frankfurt, he assured us come July 1 of 2024, 2025, I'm getting my dates here messed up, we would be assured $100,000. We've received $50,000 as of today, but there's a lot of moving parts with this bridge. We had Duke involved, we had to have the gas line moved off the bridge, which went then connected from Turkeyfoot up Brightleaf Boulevard, which services everybody basically on that east side of town. No, no cost to us for Duke to do that. Owen Electric had to drop lines, Spectrum, Alta Fiber, dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers, working with VIOX and AECOM, working with Jack and the mayor and Peter, and getting SD1 to the table to talk about funding. You know, we're, that bridge is basically supporting one entity down there, so a lot of things going on. So once all that kind of got rolling, you know, I reached back out to the state to see if there's any other funds available. Craig turned us on to County-City Bridge Improvement Grant Program. So I kind of turned that over to Joe Darty, kind of let him run with that. So, ended the resolution tonight, one of them is that funding of $490,000. So, that will help tremendously with this project. The bridge is down, they're doing some light concrete work currently. We were told the beams weren't going to be in until basically the middle of June, we just got informed they're going to be here by May 27th, so the project is moving forward. But just how many people had to be involved in this project, from Peter and the mayor and Jack, all the way down to the public works guys who are providing temporary water service to SD1? So, even Sherry's department was involved, and we had to have two easements, so we had to borrow Rachel for a day to get notary signing on that. The, the people were great, working with them on that, and, and Jack's, once again, thanks to Jack in drawing that up. So, that's kind of where we're at. I think securing funds of almost $600,000. I think securing funds of almost $600,000 in different ways is a great tribute to our team, our whole team. So, I just wanted to kind of pass that along. But I just want to say thanks to everybody that was involved. Any questions?
Kevin, just one comment, is that this was a great team effort, and especially on your old's part. You took the initiative to, you know, to track down this funding and secure it, and that was greatly appreciated. The funding with SD-1 is kind of a call share that we've done with them, so they've committed a certain percentage of this project, along with the city funds. So, we only feel as though it would be right to also share this grant money, you know, back to them. So, they'll be getting a portion of this grant funding as well as to their percentage of participation.
Absolutely. The only other thing I would like to report, you know, we are doing cleanup days this week at the Public Works facility, so any residents, starting tomorrow from 12:00 to 7:00, can come and drop things off at 26 Montgomery. There'll be Public Works gentlemen there to kind of guide them and to the dumpsters and get things dumped. So, that'll be Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, we're 12:00 to 7:00, and then again on Saturday, we'll be there from 8:00 to 2:00 for any kind of drop-offs. Yes, ma'am?
Can you just reiterate what is allowed to be brought to that? I know, if it's a long list, don't worry about it. I just, I feel like a lot of people ask about electronics a lot, and I think that's not something, correct?
I don't think electronics are allowed. I'd have to look at that again. I'm not, no paint, tires, things like that.
This is not hazardous waste?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's probably the most important thing, to maybe say what we can't bring.
Yeah, I think we'll have signage out with that out around the Public Works facility. It is on, was on the city webpage, and I'm pretty sure it was on Facebook as well, with all the things that you are allowed to bring. Any other questions? Well, thank you, I appreciate it. Have a good night.
I don't have any other questions, but Kevin, your team did a fantastic job. Joe, being able to find this additional funding is huge. We did not have this entire dollar amount built into our budget, and this bridge ballooned in cost as we got further and further into this process. And working with the state, I mean, the communication back and forth with the state and our team, and SD-1 has gone above and beyond in being able to be a partner in this and understand our limitations, and I don't know, it's really, it kind of reminds me of the underpass in the complication and how like, how many people you had to have at the table. Thank God it didn't take as long as the underpass. We all would not be happy with that, so. So, thank you so much for your efforts. It is so greatly appreciated. Thank you, Joe. All right. Mark, you had one other thing, right?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick update to council, we have a ribbon cutting in a couple of weeks. I believe I sent this out to you guys, but I will remind, it's Friday, May 23rd, at, let's see, 3412 Baker Street. The name of the business is called Square Peg Bakery. They are well-known for their cinnamon rolls, and I have heard that they will be there and warm, so please do attend. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. All right. Any reports from task force representatives? I don't know if we've had any. Okay. All right. We have a couple of bids this evening. Number one, topsoil, Kevin? You're back.
Hi, it's me again. So, we had, we had bids this past month on topsoil. We put out bids for anywhere from 300 to 500 cubic yards of dirt. We received two bids, Taylor Brothers and Bray Trucking. Taylor Brothers being the low bid at $25 per cubic foot, or cubic yard. So, we'll be moving forward with Taylor Brothers. Let me continue on, or you want to skip surplus right now? I'll get it all going.
You can keep going.
Moving forward with Sycamore Tree asphalt improvements, we had four bids this month for improvements with the asphalt along that road. Nire paving was low bid at $28,844.50. We'll be setting up a pre-construction meeting with them. And also, the Sycamore Tree concrete island, so we're gonna have eight islands going down Sycamore Tree to delineate basically the walking path and one-way traffic coming out. Nair was also, Nire paving was also the low bid on that one as well, at $28,945.92. Mr. Mies?
Did you say Nire or Naira?
Not, I'm sorry, Naira paving.
Okay, good, okay. Thank you. Ms. Rikers?
Is that where we were projecting it would come in for that improvement?
We actually thought it was gonna be more than that.
Cool.
Yeah, so. We thought it was gonna be much more with the ceiling and asphalt improvements. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Peter?
Okay, just one more thing on the pavement, so everybody kind of understands the scope of work there. It's just simply base repairs, and then sealing of the entire roadway from Houston North all the way to Turf Way. So, you know, so it's not, it's not an overlay of any sorts. Okay, so the last thing on the bid openings is some police cruisers. So, those were put out, and we received, actually, we put out two chargers, an explorer, I'm sorry, three chargers and an explorer, so we had four cars that we received bids on, and the total of the check will be $22,025. So, the costs range from $11,400 for a 2018 Dodge Charger, down to $2,900 for a 2017 Explorer, so they varied in between there.
All right. Cool. Thank you. All right. Does anybody have any unfinished business? All right. How about new business? Yes?
I make, sorry, I make a motion that we move into executive session per KRS 61.810, subsection 1, subsection B, for deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by a public agency.
Ms. Rikers? Second. All right. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right. Motion carried. We adjourn to executive session. We will be back.[1068.52] We will be back.